Okay, I call to order this Monday, February 27th, 2023 Board of Ed meeting. If you please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the East Hampton Public Schools is that we partner with our families and communities to prepare confident, compassionate, and collaborative learners who navigate a complex global society. Before we jump into our normal agenda items, I would like to make a motion to remove Agenda Item 8.2. The administrators are zooming in from home and will be available for questions during budget if we need them.
Second.
Mention of second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extension? Thank you. Student and staff recognition, there is none tonight. We move to number five liaisons, five-one inter-board liaisons. I do see Russ here from Board of Finance.
He's significant to report today.
Thank you, Russ. Anyone on Zoom from Town Council that would like to give an update? Seeing none, we will proceed. Labor Union Representatives, Neil Schlansky. Is Neil on Zoom?
He's not.
Okay, thank you. Audience of citizens, this is the first audience of citizens. There is a dedicated audience of citizens for budget in item number 10.2. So if you'd like to speak at this point on anything non-budget related, please feel free to come to the podium if you're in the room. If anyone would like to speak through Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Seeing none, we will proceed. Do I have a motion that the East Hampton Board of Education adopt a consent agenda which includes the minutes from February 13?
Some would.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Committee reports, we move to Student Board of Ed Representatives, which I believe are joining us through Zoom tonight. Ashani or Delaney, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, I just got unmuted. Um, I don't think, Ashani said that she can't hear you guys, but she shared her stuff with me and she's on the meeting. So, okay, boys varsity basketball ended their regular season 10-6. They were defeated in the first round of the Shoreline Conference Tournament. They will begin their state tournament with a home game next Monday versus Woolkit. Boys JV basketball has concluded their season as 11-7. Girls varsity basketball defeated Cromwell to win their fourth straight conference championship this Friday. They are back in action for the second round of the state tournament as they received a bye to the first with a home game on Friday. Girls JV basketball concluded their season 6-8. Boys, girl, both girls and boys hockey will enter the state championship. The girls tonight against Hall and the boys next Monday, and their opponent is not yet known. Cheerleading finished sixth at the NECA competition in East Haven. They are scheduled to compete Saturday in the Class S or the CIAC State Championships in New Haven. And Ashani said this Wednesday, the DECA club will be competing in the DECA State Conference. The Spanish club will be hosting World Language Week honoring many cultures throughout the East Hampton community. And on February 15th, the Interact Club hosted a teacher's trolley cart going around to different teachers' rooms and offering them beverages or snacks to show our teacher appreciation. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you so much. With that, we move to 8-3 Personnel, no updates. 8-4 Policy and Curriculum, Nancy?
Uh, we have some items later on in new business tonight.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Transportation, Building and Grounds, Augie?
Oh, we'll be voting on the budget tonight, and I believe there was a meeting with the middle school movement recently.
Yes, to which I will refer to Nancy Goller.
Yes, the middle school committee met this morning. Um, we've got an update on all the applications which have been approved, and so we're just waiting on the next step of the process, and we'll expect to meet again in a few weeks.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving to agenda number nine, Communications, 9-1 Superintendent's Report.
I'm sharing just some pictures that I think you'll enjoy. As you are aware, the governor signed into legislation free meals beginning Wednesday for all students. So a free breakfast and a free lunch for the remainder of this year. And this is the governor's office, and if you look at the lady in the white jacket with the black v-neck shirt, that is our Food Services Director Jen Bowe, and she is holding a thank you card from our preschool Smart Start program that says, "Thank you bunches for free lunches." Stacy Gibson always does a great job, and here he is reading another thank you card again from our Smart Start students. And here is Jen over to the right as he was acting aside here. So we're very fortunate. Jen is a very strong player at the legislative level, making sure that nutrition legislation and certainly free lunches and things like that remain at the forefront. So we are covered for the rest of the year for free lunches. There is legislation going through process at this point for free lunches to continue at least into into next year. So a special thank you to Jen for always representing us very well at the state level. This past Thursday, Joe Courtney spent some time visiting East Hampton. He came to visit us as we were one of the communities that received funding for a psychologist for the next three years, and he just wanted to come and meet some of the students. And so our, this is members of our Interact Club. We had about a 45-minute session with the administrators and Joe and the stories that they told about their own mental health concerns and where they stand past the pandemic. I just appreciated the candor of the students, and I know Joe did too. And we made sure that he saw the the wall of Washington DC trips, and I think he was very impressed that we've done such a nice job. So again, thank you to the building committee. If you have not seen this display just outside of our cafeteria, it is a wonderful historic hall. And that's it.
Thank you.
Let me share because I think when we go into budget, I'm going to keep me on for just a moment.
Yeah. You can pick right up the budget whenever you're ready.
Okay, so I know the board had a couple of quick questions as far as one of the questions you asked was the cost of the math positions and programming. So as you can see, our K-2 math specialist, 3-5 math specialist, and 6-8 math specialist, and I, the notes for each as to what they do. The 9-12 math specialist, because it's two days per week, is 42,427. And just a clarification, because I know we talked about this at our last meeting. The, this position, the 9-12 math specialist, does not oversee and participate in student support like the other three math specialists. This teacher really is working just with faculty and the principal, looking at scores, doing a lot of data mining, making sure that student, that the teachers look at their own individual student scores, but they are not involved with direct services to students. Our K-2 math specialists, 3-5 math specialists, and 6-8 math specialists, they do do work with individual students. They work with a couple of the parents that oversee the students, and they also work with the teachers for data meetings and modeling lessons, et cetera. One of the other questions you asked was the hiring of the ABA teacher and the implication. So right now, in order not to add any staff, what I've done is in the budget that I've recommended to you, we've eliminated the 9-12 math specialist, we've eliminated a K-5 psychologist that mainly does required testing, and we're adding the 9-12 ABA teacher. So you can see it's about a wash. If that ABA teacher comes in on the low side, we'll also be able to cover insurance as needed. And then just a couple of things that I want you to be aware of. We, we initially, the initial projection for medical insurance was between eight and 12. We budgeted 12%. The state has indicated that it will not exceed 10%. So because we went ahead and budgeted 12%, and usually I'm a little more risky, but we did budget 12 because we got caught last year with a higher insurance, there's a savings of about $89,000. And with the pension, the initial projection was estimated at 10.5. It's going to be a little bit lower than that, so we see about a savings of $50,000. But before we take that 139 and just take it off the budget, there's a couple of shortfall areas that I think you should be aware of. As we are adding that ABA position at the high school to work with children coming up from the middle school with autism, typically we would have an interventionist with them. I asked Rod to reassign interventionists, but based on our need and based on our deficit this year, as you know, we had to hire additional interventionists to support our students, I do not anticipate having the staff that I can shift some to the high school. So we will need to hire probably two interventionists to accommodate the new ABA program at the high school. And special ed tuition, I, I think we've cut that very, very close. That hurt us hard this year. As you know, we're still running that deficit. So I'm recommending instead of looking at that 139 as something we can shave off, my recommendation would be to shift money into the classified salaries to cover up to two interventionists and special ed tuition. Now, my pledge, and I've got a Board of Finance member sitting here, that if we found this summer that we did not need the two interventionists, if I could indeed move them from different buildings, and if we found that our tuition came in less 64 than the 64,000, then that's money that we would hold and and give back to the to the community. But I, I think we, if we just look at that 139 right now as a savings, I think we run the risk of putting ourselves right where we are this year. And in your packets, I don't have a slide of this, but in your packet is a is a quick outline of contractual and mandated expenses. I think we did this exercise, the board asked me to do this exercise because the town council was hoping that we would come in under 2%, anything that was mandated or contractual. And I think you can see we're close to like a 1.3%. Karen put that budget, that together. I think she did a great job explaining those lines out of this one. You can un-share me at this point.
Any questions for Paul from the board?
Last meeting, Sal brought up a question that at the end of the season or at the end of the budget year, just at the, were line items trans, line item transfers approved by the board? And in recollection, that did happen before in the not-too-recent past.
Okay.
And then I forgot why you had mentioned that we don't do that anymore. But in recollection, I found that was very handy thing for the board members that was usually our last meeting for the summer. But it also allowed us to talk about where funds were coming from, where funds went to.
Sure. And I, well, I think what we're finding is by the time we clear out POs and others, it's well into sometimes August. I don't know, Karen, if you want to give an answer to that.
I think, Ken, we have done that when there has been big programmatic changes. Otherwise, and we used to, and I think we still do, in June, give the superintendent authority to to make transfers over the course of the summer. But in reality, we have not done that in East Hampton or in general or as far back as as I can remember. But we always could go back to that kind of a method of of making all the budget lines, but I could, should we run to the bottom line and then have pluses and minuses all along the way? Unless it's been a
In my recollection and review, it appeared that even in Dr. Golden's time, when I sat on this board, we were so the question is, why did, of course, why did the practice, I guess it's a question. Did the board surrender some of its authority to review? And I believe it did. I would, I would ask you all to consider, and the superintendent also, that anything over, I don't know, set a number, 10,000, that has to be moved out of an account and come back to the board for review.
Is that something that should be deferred to policy?
I'm surprised we didn't have a policy on that because it was a practice for for many years. I don't know where, where, again, I took some time off, so I don't know what came off the but yes, I would like to, I would like to possibly refer that to policy for review. Um, not entirely the right time, but I will be making a very small motion in between making the budget. I want to add 500 bucks to the music program, so be prepared.
I think there might be an update coming on that.
Would you like me to give that update?
If you want to, sure.
Since it was mentioned.
Why not?
Uh, Ken, I think what you're referring to is the $400 requested for the Tri-M stipend, and I think they actually requested 150 for additional funds to support the accompanists. And you'll recall, the board did add the accompanists fund in last year, but $50 a concert hire is certainly reasonable these days. Just so you know, the the two music teachers have volunteered next year to run the Tri-M club without a stipend, similar to other volunteer organizations. And Mr. Werner has indicated that we would use student activities funds to to be able to pay for the increase in the accompanists for next year. So you can probably expect a proposal in the following year's budget for those two items. But we felt that we could handle that this year.
We're going to use the students' money for the 150 for its career, something else?
No, well, typically donations and other things like that, general donations go into student activities. So there were some funds, we still have funds from the China group that visited us. There was funding that came which each student that we hosted, and we've used that for a number of different things. So this isn't money that students are putting in being diverted towards music. This is just a general fund to support little extra things. You can't afford $150, but we're using student money. Yes, I guess that's what you're telling me. I want to make the motion to fund that a little bit later, so be prepared.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Ken, are you outside?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just, it's come to my attention during this past week, a couple of issues I'd like to just put out in the public domain. So I've already talked to Paul ahead of time, so he's expecting me. So it's come to my attention that prior to the pandemic, the Director of Food Service shared its position with East Haddam, and we no longer do that. And so is there a possible savings to go back to that in some manner, shape, or form? And if not, why not?
Well, first of all, it was not a great relationship for us. Nothing against East Haddam, but the relationship did not benefit us that much. East Haddam.
Financially, it did not affect.
Well, financially, it was beneficial. However, we were not getting enough services from our food services director. She was required to spend a lot more time in East Haddam than we felt was really beneficial to us. As a result of her being here now, we've got the garden at Memorial School, which has become part of the science curriculum. We're adding the garden at the Center School. I think the quality of our programming has changed strictly because she is full-time with us. I would hate to start looking around at other communities and asking them if they wanted to share her, being very selfish. But I think she brings, brings a lot to the table, a lot that has entered our our curriculum is because of her with the with the two gardens. Thank you.
Could I share on that as well? Under her dedicated leadership, we did complete our our commitment to East Haddam during the pandemic year that ended June 2020. But beginning in March 2020, we entered the pandemic feeding program, and it was just an overwhelming effort to manage one district, never mind two. But during that process, the team that was built here under her leadership and their involvement in what happened with the pandemic feeding from 2021 to 22, so the last fiscal year, we increased our program revenue by over $627,000. We went over a million-two of income last year compared to less than $600,000 prior, prior to the pandemic. So her sales were increased by 18 times what we got from East Haddam. So it's pretty much, the focus was beneficial for us to be focused in. And under the, while we had that revenue, we also were able to completely cover all of the cafeteria benefits for every employee, which was is over 125,000. We also began to invest in our and replace some of our old equipment at the Center School Memorial School for for over 30,000 and built the fund balance by over 170,000, which exceeded the amount that the state said we could have for a fund balance for the cafeteria. So we got applied to them to to keep the high fund balance so that we can continue to improve our equipment at no cost to the general operating budget. So it's a pretty amazing result, is all I can say. And I did summarize all that, which I can hand out to everybody too.
Yeah, please do. I think that'd be great if you didn't have that.
Thank you, Karen.
And then my second question is, I believe in the capital budget that you recommended a new van. And I was wondering if you could explain why you think we knew van versus used or, you know, what, you know, what is your thought behind that?
Well, we don't have any van at all at this point. What we're hoping to do is start with at least a van for special ed transportation. And we are paying, Karen, I think if I say $350 a trip to a private transportation company, I think ultimately if we had two or three vans of our own, we could see something like a 250, $300,000 savings over the course of the year.
One year?
Correct. But not with one van. I think you'd need about three vans to do that. One student's transportation alone could be 80 to 100,000 dollars. So even if that van only made two trips and it'd be capable of making more during the day, because every time we move a student, we pay a private transportation company to move them. I think if we got in the practice of hiring our own driver and with one van and starting there, I, it's, it's going to pay for itself very quickly. Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul, Mike?
Superintendent, so going back to Ken's comments, what that money, the 150 dollars you're talking about, we didn't make it from there. What, what other things could that money be used for? You know what I mean? So we're talking about a very small amount of money here, but what other things, if we don't use it for that purpose?
Student activities?
Yes.
So for example, we have right now, we have what we call the China Fund, which you recall, we, most of you were not on the board at the time, but we had about 35 students stay with us for six weeks before the pandemic. And because we agreed to take them, the family got money to pay them, and the school got money just to do, you know, thank you for hosting these students. We've used it for a number of different things along the way. So that we would leave it to the discretion of the principal to decide how to how to use it.
Point out also that the Student Activity Fund is not under our control.
That is correct.
It's nothing that we can handle, or we cannot allocate that money at this level. That goes at the building level, that's student money. Those are dues and activity fees that they pay.
Right, and I only suggested it because Mr. Werner offered that he would cover it be the 150, but it would not come from class dues or other things like that.
Additional questions? Okay. Hearing none, we will move to 10-2, which is Public Comment on the 23-24 Budget. If you're in the room and would like to speak specifically to budget items, please stand and come to the podium. I'm seeing none. We will move to Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none. Okay. Item 11, Unfinished Business, there is none. New business 12-1. We move to approve the budget.
So yeah, I would like to make an motion to approve the 2023-2024 Board of Education budget as presented by the Superintendent of Schools in the amount of $36,352,478.
We have a motion with a second. Okay, Nancy, seconds. We'll begin discussion. Augie, I'll start with you.
Motion to amend, please to add.
I believe we have to wait till we get to you for discussion in order for you to amend.
Motion can be made anytime.
For amendments, I believe you have to be called on for discussion.
I'm not quite sure about that.
Would you like for me to pause and look it up, or can I start with Augie?
You can start with Augie.
Thank you very much.
I like him.
Augie, go ahead and start for discussion.
I am to amend the motion with the addition of a $1,600 stipend for the bike club at the high school.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll begin discussion on the amendment, which is the $1,600 for the bike club at the high school. Augie, go ahead and start discussion on your amendment.
Yeah, so just as a parent, and a lot of conversation with other parents is always talking about how much time our kids spend behind their iPads and switches and everything else. And you know, from what I understand, the middle school has done a great job with the bike club. And you know, the middle school kids who'll be going up to the high school with nothing there but their iPads and electronics. So I think it'd be great to help them continue into the high school and grow to the high school level, get them outside and exercise.
What is it paid for?
Oh, hold on one second. We'll get to you. Go ahead, Mark.
On this?
On the amendment.
It's pro-mental health, keeps kids out of trouble. It's a proven theory on one board. $1,600.
No comments?
Um, I think that in the spirit of maintaining what we have, although the bike club is not present
Um, I think that in the spirit of maintaining what we have, although the bike club is not present at the high school, the students from the middle school are now moving to the high school. Um, it's been a highly successful program. I think it is a great alternative to organize sports for, for students who are not interested in that. So, um, I think that'd be, okay. Nancy?
I'm completely in support of a very successful, um, program with many students that participate. And as Nancy says, um, you know, while it's not an organized, um, it's the same as an organized competitive, um, sport. It, it offers opportunities for, for students that don't participate in those types of activities to do something physical and healthy. Um, I can't see a reason not to.
Okay. I'm going to move to Martha, who is joining us electronically tonight.
Hello, everyone. I am in support of this amendment. I think that it offers kids who are not involved in after-school athletics a really good, solid, um, activity. So I am in favor of it.
Thank you, Martha. Sal?
If my colleague doesn't mind, I'll meet fog him and ask the same question. What does this pay for?
Go ahead, Paul.
The, uh, $1,600 is for the stipend. It would be the same stipend that we're paying the middle school biking club advisor.
For advisor?
Yes. So it pays for the adult that would be running the, the club.
Doesn't pay for, um, bicycles, parts, things like that.
Everybody brings their own bike, uh, but the local airline cycle in town has been very good, um, helping kids with bike repairs and things like that.
Josh?
He answered my question.
Okay. Um, I'll just add, I agree. It's, I think it's important from a mental health initiative. Um, I think it accommodates many students. I think, how many? 60, if I heard correctly, 60 students, uh, which I think is a fair number. And I think for continuity purposes, it's important to have a program, program that exists at the middle school that's very popular to continue that into the high school. So that's where I stand. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, we will move to vote. All in favor? I? Opposed? Josh opposed? Okay, motion carries. But Martha? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Hi.
Hi, Martha. What's your vote on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me honest. I promise I'll get better at Zoom. Okay, the amendment has passed, so we move back to debate on the main motion, which I believe now is at 36,354,078. Do I have that amount correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are, uh, Michael, for discussion on the main motion.
Okay, so we have, again, like last year, some issues with supplies and I really regret not helping more last year. So I, I moved to amend the motion, um, with the addition of $4,000 added for the supply line item.
Okay, we have a motion to add $4,000 to the supply line item. Do we have a second on the amendment?
I second.
Okay, Ollie seconds. We'll begin discussion on the amendment. Mike, do you have any further for discussion? I know you opened.
I just go to the schools law and, uh, speaking to the teachers and the amount of money they put into their own supplies is deplorable. I think we can afford to help them out this year.
Okay, Ken?
No comment.
Okay, Nancy?
As usual, I think we underfunds in this area and, um, if we can add a little bit more, then I, I think we should.
Okay. Nancy?
I agree with the, the previous comments.
Okay. Martha?
I am in support of this amendment.
Thank you very much. Sal?
I also agree. This is something that we need to do because I think it's appalling that we have to have our teachers dig out of their own pockets to supply anything for the school. Unless it's, um, my, uh, second cousin, she was a teacher. And, um, her husband was a, uh, principal in Musa. And, um, uh, she would do things on her own, um, on her own for her class. I believe some of our teachers do that as well. As long, I just don't like to see that as an excuse to, like, for example, we had an issue with basketballs earlier. Um, I am in favor of this motion. Uh, I do not like to see teachers going excessively into their own pockets for anything for the classes. We pay enough as taxpayers for this. This should not be an issue. So I guess I'm in favor.
Josh?
If the superintendent thought it was a big deal, he would have put it in the budget. So, votes.
Okay. Uh, I would like to state that I think when the budget was initially crafted, inflation is not where it is today. And I will cite that as my reason for support for this, that to keep a line item the same from one year to the next with inflation, where we know it is right now, I think is a little bit, um, I can't find a word, but I support it for that reason. I'm not sure how I feel about that. Any further discussion? Okay, we will vote all in favor of the amendment to add $4,000 for supplies. I?
I.
Martha?
Yes.
Josh?
No.
Josh is opposed. Okay. Amendment passes. I believe now we are at 36,354,078. Do I have that amount correct?
36,358,078.
Yeah, 358. Oh.
336.
I had it correct on my calculator, wrote it down on my piece of paper. Thank you very much. Can I bring this back to discussion on the original, which is not an amendment? Ken?
Make a motion at $150 for the music program and the piano accompanist. And if you need the backup on that, then as my good friend Sal had mentioned, weeks ago, we were talking about the art program and how we spend so much on athletics with so little on, on people who are in non-athletics. I think $150 being not even one tenth of one one-hundredth of a percent of a $38 million budget, we should be able to find that somewhere.
Thank you, Ken. Nancy? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Second, can someone please second Ken's amendment?
Second.
Michael, thank you. Any further discussion on that, Ken, before I move to Nancy for discussion?
Sad. We gotta go. We gotta spend this kind of man hours at 150 bucks.
Nancy?
I mean, can't disagree with that.
Nancy?
I have nothing to add, but I'm in support.
Thank you. Martha?
I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Martha. Sal?
I'm also in support.
Josh?
I'm supporting.
Thank you. I also am in support for the reasons previously stated. And with that, we move to vote. All in favor of $150 being added to the music program? I, motion is unanimous. Martha, I believe you are yes.
Yes, I am.
Very much. Motion is unanimous. I believe now we're at 36,358,228. Do I have that amount correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we move back to motion on the original. Nancy?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I move to amend the motion with the addition of $42,427 for the restoration of one of the part-time positions that has been identified for elimination.
Does that amendment have a second?
Second.
Okay, Nancy seconds. And we will be getting discussion on this amendment. Nancy?
Um, again, in the spirit of maintaining the services that we have, I know that Mr. Smith and Karen thought it was so hard to keep the number responsible, but I also think that, um, psychologists and the math specialists that we have worked so hard to get in this district are super important. Um, and the elimination of both of those positions is troublesome to me. So I would like to see, uh, at least one of those positions restored.
I'm gonna, um, pause and defer to Paul for a moment, if you don't mind.
Uh, let me just remind the board that my goal in putting the budget together was not to increase staff, but to keep last year's staff moved to this year, minus one teacher, and give you a budget that really represented what we have this year moving forward. With that said, the 42,000 for the high school math specialist, which we have two days a week, plus the 42,000 for the part-time psychologist that mainly is involved in testing. I had slated those for elimination to pay for the APA teacher, which we have to have. If the board is interested in restoring, my suggestion might be, because both of these people are retirees, uh, my suggestion would be, instead of two days each, uh, bring back each for one day. So we would have the math specialist at the high school, uh, one day a week, working with the teachers and data, et cetera. Uh, or it could be spread over two half-days. And the psychologist, which is mainly involved in, uh, testing students for their IEP meetings, uh, PPT meetings, have that person do the equivalent of one day a week of, of testing as well. I think that's, that is the best use of the 42,000. So rather than have them both come back for two days a week each, have each come back for one day a week.
Okay. Would you like to withdraw?
I can amend my amendment?
Yes.
All right, I would like to amend my amendment. Um, to amend the budget or amend the motion with the addition of $42,427 for the restoration of the equivalent of one part-time position that was identified for elimination.
Okay, does the amendment have a second?
Have a little second.
Okay.
The amendment's the amendment.
Nancy, you second the amendment to the amendment. And now we move back to the amendment and discuss on the amended amendment. Correct?
No, because what happened, she never, never had a second on her amendment. She never had one on the board. So she rephrased her amendment or her motion to amend.
Okay.
And they actually not accepted.
So now, now she has a valid motion.
So now we're good. Back to your regular amendments. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Okay. Do you have any additional discussion?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Nancy?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot to say. I mean, it's clear. I've asked about this before and in the interest of, of, uh, you know, retaining what we have. I mean, this work has to be done. Somebody has to do it. And I think, um, superintendent, you know, in his wisdom, knew that, you know, he, we need to somehow fund, you know, the things that we're required to fund. And this is just where it had to come from, but I think based on what Mr. Smith has said, um, I, I like this idea and, uh, yeah.
Martha?
I can appreciate the creativity here and I am also in support of this.
Thank you, Martha. Sal?
I am not in support of what Paul has recommending. Paul, can you please, my, my reasoning behind it is we are behind in math. I'm focusing on that. And there was a large percentage of students, I believe you mentioned it sometime earlier, of 25%, of the 25% of the students were behind and really need to be focused in on. And my thought at the time of the last meeting was to bring back specifically the math specialist that who could possibly be focused or redirected to help in that area where we're behind. So now today, I'm hearing that basically the person doesn't help students and in fact helps teachers. And so I'm a little confused on that. And as far as the other, uh, the psychologist who just does, well, just, in my opinion, outsider, uh, testing, couldn't that be wrapped into the curriculum or with the other teachers or however? Can, can't that be wrapped in without providing additional resources? I like, in my opinion, tell, correct me if I'm wrong, why can't we use the math specialist and focus our attention where we need it most, in my opinion?
Yeah, and your, your point is valid, but let's not mistake that this, the high school person working directly with teachers, having them look at the individual student data. So for example, when the math teacher is getting together with our six math teachers, they're looking at specific student data and which students need help and how they should target their lessons for the help. So even though this person isn't sitting one-on-one or in small groups with students, that work is directly impacting the, the progress of students. So when I said this person doesn't work directly with students, uh, working directly with teachers has strong impact on, on student performance. Uh, the psychologist, so you, you, you know, you're asking me to pick the baby or get a piece of each baby. Um, the psychologist, if we add, I don't use the word just testing because every student that is, is being, uh, recommended for special ed or as their triennial PT, PPT comes up, they must go through a series of, of testing. I, I think if I say it's about three hours of testing, I'm not exaggerating, uh, per student. So thi- this, having an in-house person do it to contract out would be three times, four times more expensive. To have other people do it means that they are not servicing the, the students. So when I put this budget together, I said, we're gonna have to service students less. And with the math, you know, the, the teachers are gonna have to work with the principal and just do their own discerning of data. They don't have a lot of time to do that because they're teaching full-time. So both of these positions impact students. The math teacher at the high school is doing great service for us at the high school level. Uh, the psychologist that's there is doing great service for us doing the, the testing of, of students. I only chose to eliminate those because I did not want to add the new position at the high school without showing you that I was eliminating other positions. If you want to restore and get the biggest bang for the buck, my recommendation is have each do one day. So instead of each being a point four assignment, they would be point two.
It's a tough decision. I hate, I, I personally would like to see more, but we're in a tough budget crunch right now. So I'll, uh, agree with you that, uh, we'll to, um, as amended, I agree with, uh, with the motion.
I think so. Josh?
You had it right the first time around, eliminating it completely. I think it's the right decision.
Does that complete your contribution or discussion? Thank you. Ollie?
I'm, I'm in support. I think, uh, I agree with Paul. Uh, it's tough to choose between one or the other, and I think he gave a fair, uh, you know, a fair response as far as to split it up equally and do it that way. So I agree with Nancy's amended amendment.
Mike?
So I just wanna, I, I like it. I just want, want us to remember that Paul mentioned the goal set forth by our council, and I want to make sure hopefully we're not gonna, I know we came in way under, so hopefully we're still under after these, because little 150, $4,000. I, I wasn't worried. We're talking for 2,000. It worries me for the, for the future boards, but I think it'll still put us within that goal. Um, I'm not cool with lessening the service to our students for more unfunded mandates that we just keep getting from the state and the feds. Um, so I, I am in support of that amendment. I just, I want to make sure it's still within the confines of what was given to us.
Thank you. Ken?
Nothing yet.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, we move to vote. All in favor? I?
I.
Martha with an I. Thank you, Martha. Josh? Josh is a nine. Okay, motion carries. The amendment carries to add $42,427 for the restoration of the equivalent of one part-time position at high, um, for the positions that Paul had stated. And now I have 36,406,55. Is that number accurate?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And we move back to debate on the main motion as amended, which now includes the bike club supplies, the music program for $150 and the restoration of the part-time position. I am in support. I feel we have a problem at the state level. feel we have a problem at the state level, which I think I'll be talking a little bit about at, at different meetings in the future, coming up in the near future. And I think we need to maintain what we have. I agree. I think Nancy used that, and I agree that we're doing our best to maintain what we have. And certain aspects of this motion as it has been amended speak to things like mental health, and I appreciate that. And with that, I'll move to Nancy.
I, I think I completely agree. I don't really have much to add. I think we've, you know, talked about it over and over. Like, I know I've said it, you know, maintaining, keeping what we have, keeping it great, you know, and, and, um, I think these smaller items that, uh, we decided to add through these amendments are, um, also continuing, um, things and, um, that I, I really like how this looks. I'm very comfortable with it.
Martha?
Yeah, I don't have much to add either. I think we're all in agreement that these are really, really difficult times to look at any cuts. Um, in fact, you know, we need the opposite. We need more, not less. Um, so maintaining what we have, I think, is really important, and I am grateful for these amendments, and I am hopeful that we will succeed in getting this budget passed.
Thank you, Martha. Sal?
This has been a really tough budget year. And I understand as a percentage of the town that if they're retired, really don't care about this budget and will hold it down. Um, my focus on the board has been to try to make sure that we are, um, keeping our grades up. So I'm focused on STEM programs and, um, getting back to pre-pandemic math and literacy rates. Um, we cannot leave our children behind. I don't care what the rest of the state says. I don't care what the rest, how the rest of the state is looking at their metrics. I want to see us do as good, if not better than prior to pandemic and as soon as possible. So with that being said, um, I am convinced, now some can say maybe Paul's still bothering me, but I am convinced that Paul's doing an excellent job. I believe that he is keeping the budget down. We have had in the past previous superintendents who padded the budget. I do not see that here. Uh, we, uh, most of us, we've been Republicans, have looked at this in detail and searched for areas of cuts that perhaps were padded. It's very, very difficult to find any. I think Paul did an excellent job. The curriculum, uh, director and the effort she's put in have been awesome, in my opinion. I see a lot of good things happening here. We, I believe, are a shining star in the state, which the state doesn't know yet. And I'm looking forward to and hope that sooner or later, we can come to the moment where we can across all grades show that we have reached a pre-pandemic levels and hopefully ahead of all the other town. And we can toot our own horn, and I think it'd be fantastic. And I don't know, do we, we're gonna have a party somehow? Um, but, um, that is the goal, not my goal. Um, of course, keeping that going, keep, you know, we're, we are on track to do so ahead of most of the state. Um, and we're doing so at a reasonable budget, not padded that I can see. And so in that being said, I am in favor of this budget picked up.
Thank you, Sal. Josh?
Uh, the baseline is unsustainable. This is too much in one year to go up two million dollars. So it's, you cannot do it year on year on it. Uh, we can't afford it, and it's too much for one year to go up. So contractual agreements are what they are. Two million dollars in one year over next year is too much to contemplate. And these towns, people think so too.
Does that conclude your discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Augie will come back now, do you? Any further questions for him?
No, I just, I wanna commend everybody for, you know, I know Paul and, and Karen, but, you know, everybody put all the work into this budget. I know this, I'm pretty sure this may be the highest budget that you've ever brought, it, it, the five point eight percent. And I know it wasn't an easy thing to, to, once you put pen to paper and came up with that. So what I appreciate is that we just didn't look, we know it's a high number. Um, but we didn't look to, to lower that number. We actually looked to improve on our kids' experiences. So that, I'm, I'm happy with it. I support that.
Michael?
I just go back to, we're not gonna lessen services to the kids in this district because the state's out of control and our legislators don't seem to see the trickle-down effect it's having on us. So I, I support the budget. Uh, we were very responsible with it. And like, uh, several colleagues have stated, I can't find anywhere else we can cut from here. I'm just not gonna pay the price for the state, so I, I support it.
To make a special mention to Sal for having the personal courage to, uh, say what he said tonight. I know that does not make him very popular when he has a party. But I commend you, sir, for, uh, doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy? Um, I don't think I have anything further. I just wanna echo what Augie said and, and thank everybody who put all this hard work into this budget and, and once again, worked so hard to keep it responsible for our, for our community, um, but to do the best by our kids. So I am fully in support of the amended budget. I too am in support of the amended budget. Is there any further discussion on the amended? Okay. To reiterate, the motion we're now voting on is to pass the Board of Education budget in the amount of thirty-six million four hundred thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. I just got the nod from Karen that my calculations are correct. Thank you. All, all in favor? Do we need a second? All in favor? I? Opposed? Josh opposed. Martha, was that an aye from you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. With that, we move to twelve-two. Review of Recommended Board of Education Policy, four-one-one-eight-point-one-two, Freedom of Speech.
Yes, we have, uh, a first read tonight. Um, this is, uh, the additional wording at the end of the policy is due to updated legislation.
Any questions for Nancy about policy four-one-one-eight-point-one-two? Okay. Twelve-three, Review of Recommended Board of Education Policy, nine-three-two-five, Public Participation at Eons.
Okay, so you'll see there, um, the wording in red was added. It was really just added for clarity. It just felt like members of the public was a little broad, what public, what members? And so we just clarified citizens of East Hampton, employees of the East Hampton Public School.
Any questions for Nancy? Yes.
So, third major paragraph starts with, unless an answer.
Yes.
What do we do, the last, the last, uh, sentence? After they say in the piece, it says, "The board but shall," which means you must, "defer the item to a later meeting or to the appropriate committee." And that is not necessarily then the practice. Um, and then, well, I have no desire to, to limit any sort of freedom of speech or anything, but that could conceivably be an obstructionist situation where person after person after person will line up at that podium. It could be manipulated, and you have to refer it to commit. Under this, you have to refer it to commit or bring it up as an agenda item later on. I suggest that you would instead of but shall, but then. That's my two cents on that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or consideration for policy nine-three-two-five?
Would you suggest to go back to the committee, or is the board comfortable with may and you can vote on it next time?
I'm comfortable with voting next time. Karen, are you good with that, or would you like to see it as a first read again? Okay.
Unless anybody wants to have a, a more in-depth discussion over the concept of, of, do you want, do you want the public to, to put, put anything they want on the agenda? You know, depending on, it, it's fine to a certain extent doing it now, but, um, do you want a situation where if you had, um, some highly motivated people, and a lot of them, um, they become to have your agenda for the bad?
So I think we're good for a second read unless at the next meeting. Are you good with that?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
A good point. Thank you.
Twelve-four. Review of Recommended Board of Education Policy, nine-three-two-five-point-four-three, Electronic Attendance.
Uh, yes, this, um, you'll see in the crossouts in blue, what was, uh, the wording that was formerly there, and then the new red. It's basically, um, the updates are due to our current practice of using Zoom and how board members may participate electron, through that electronic means. That explains what the changes are.
Any questions for Nancy?
Is there any thought that a certain number, a certain number, such as a quorum, would have to be physically present?
Doesn't that apply by, by rule anyways, regardless of electronic?
No, I mean, you gotta, but electronically, you could have a quorum. So, one more. Think about it as a situation, we'll take the extreme. Um,
Snowstorm had gone on one time.
Or, or, I don't know, just Nancy and I are the only ones here. I was gonna say to you, but I read that out of her here. Um, we're the only ones here. The chairs, everybody else is casting a win on the Zoom. Tough wins. We did a little research, and I think that we are required to have one board member and one official present at the designated published space, public location. So as long as one board member was live and the superintendent or his representative were here, then everybody else could participate through Zoom.
Where, where did that come from?
We don't remember. We were, we were doing some research and we found it, and I said, Shelley, where did you find it? She said, I've gotta go back and look for it.
And do you still have to have a location available?
So then, if we, if we say we have a, a meeting in the town hall chambers, this room still has to be available for people.
Makes sense. Um, I, can, can that be chased down somehow?
We'll do a little research on that.
I mean, I, I don't like the idea of, of just everybody hanging out just, you know, in the Zoom. I don't have really, have a Zoom handout, I guess, I reckon.
We'll, we'll do some research, because the rules have changed since COVID, when you could have everything in Zoom. They're still allowing for hybrid meetings, such as the one we're doing now. But I don't think it can go back to full Zoom. If we're publishing that, it's not a Zoom-only meeting.
Well, that, I think, was part of the special executive powers under the emergency.
Right.
Was, was the, uh, the virtual meetings.
Right.
Same with the remote notification and stuff like that, so.
Um, yeah, we can get a little bit more in front of, is there a recording of this? I'm not personally, uh, of, not by any, I'm not entirely comfortable with everybody being in another world. Not for a function of government.
I agree with, I agree with Ted. We, we took it out and, and we got elected to be here. So I don't, I, I think that there should be a little more motivation for board members to show up. I don't want that to, I don't want people to get complacent and just, you know, make up a, a little reason that they can't make it. It's a, it's a difficult position. And I can see the rabbit hole that we can go down. At least, probably one or two people here.
It's easier for the elected official to hide behind that, or, or anybody. You see it with the cyberbullying and everything else. Uh, if you're not out in front taking the heat, well, that's, that's like I commended Sal for, for standing up and having the courage to say what he had to say.
Are you comfortable bringing this back to policy?
Yes, we can.
Okay. If there's any opportunity to, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Nancy about policy nine-three-two-five, or three, Electronic Attendance? Okay. With that, we move to Agenda Item thirteen. I hereby move that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of performance of the girls varsity basketball coach, athletic director, and for the purpose of discussion of performance of the superintendent of schools. And I further move that the superintendent of schools, Paul Smith, and attorney Zachary Scheran be invited into the executive session.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussions? All in favor? I, motion is unanimous. We will now move to the downstairs meeting room for our executive session.
We'll be coming back here?
Yes, we'll be coming back here to. Okay. Okay, with that, we move to item number fourteen, Possible Action of Executive Session Items. There are none. I'll continue. Item fifteen, Future Business, Any Suggestions from the Board for Future Business? There are none. I'll continue. Personnel actions, there are none. Audience of citizens, last chance for audience of citizens. Anyone in the room who wish to speak, please come to the podium. Anyone on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. None, thank you. Calendar of events is attached. And Paul did email the board a calendar of important budget meetings coming up. Paul, anything else that you want to mention about the calendar? Okay. And with that, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Submove. Motion in a second. All in favor? I. Motion is unanimous.